Golf course, Evans Plunge Golf Course.
We have a motion to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Minutes of the last meeting, we need a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Claims in between.
Two hundred and fourteen, three eighty, forty-seven.
We need a motion to approve bills in between. Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Current claims. Ninety-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-two, eighty-one. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, are there any comments or questions?
Yeah, I got a question. Page one, we bought a fuel can for sixty dollars, I guess I was curious what kind of a fuel can costs sixty dollars?
That's be a pretty good one.
It could.
I can't comment on this particular can, but I know I bought one for this season and due to new federal stuff, just a two gallon can cost me thirty-seven dollars, so that's a five gallon can. You know, you gotta have a funnel attached to it and it's...
Metal safety can. Forty-three dollars and ten cents.
It says sixty.
And then there looks like freight attached to it, shipping and freight. Part of that order was returned, there was a fuel tank cap also purchased and that was returned. But that's not included in that amount, so...
Once again, we're paying twenty dollars freight, maybe we could've ordered it through somebody here, huh?
Um, page ten, um, I asked about it, Marley. Number one, one, four, nine, six, one.
It says guaranteed, seven's plunge.
Certified folders is play service.
You have other questions, well?
I do. I would like to know why we had two cop cars break down in town. Like we couldn't tow them out the streets out ourselves.
Happened on a Saturday night and they called Billy and Billy didn't have anybody...
Both of them happened on Saturday night?
Well, the one that got towed happened on Saturday night.
Both of them got towed.
What page did you run?
I looked at the bill, I was trying to find the page I could see. Wheels towing and repair, page nine, for a hundred and forty-six dollars. That one had towing and a fuel pump within, if I remember right. And the other one was just to tow, we're gonna find where that one's at.
My understanding was we only towed one, but I...
Well, and the bills that said they towed two, they towed the drangle and then they towed the charge?
Bear Avenue to City Shop?
Oh yeah.
Was it towing?
Yeah, that one was a hundred dollars from Bear Avenue to the street shop and the other one was, I don't know where is that, but it's to Dale's and he fixed it. I'm just, I mean...
The mechanic had four vehicles in line when the one went to Dale's, according to Bob.
Well, I'm not worried about him fixing it, I mean, if that's the case, fine, but, I mean, heck, they could've told me, I got, called me, I got towed, strapped over and charged them and it all take it out there, no offense. That's what you guys are in business for.
But I don't think you're insured for that, right?
My, yeah, I'm insured, my pickup's insured, I can tow it.
I don't think you're insured to tow.
Well, the point is, they could've... I got part trailer, I can tow anything and insure my trailer and everything.
They didn't have to tow it that night, they have extra vehicles, they got about two or three, I mean, it wasn't like it was a crisis.
I, I just, you know...
Where did they have to tow it from?
One from Bear Avenue and the other one was just towed to the shop, it says, I'm not sure where it was. One was on the thirteenth of April and the other one was on the sixteenth of April. The drangle was the one towed on the sixteenth. Check out fuel pump and towed to shop, as it says. Fifty dollars for that tow job and a hundred when it went out to the street shops, so, guess if he towed it to his own place, it'd happen.
Deeper, that's what I see worked on. Gave me a break.
Uh, that certified folders is for the Rapid City, Black Hills, southeastern South Dakota, and it goes into Wyoming and catches the eastern part of Wyoming is the distribution area for the certified folders. For the Evans Plunge, and we are also sending the golf course, rack carts out at the same time.
Any other questions or comments on the current claims?
I got one on page nine for fifteen hundred dollars for toilet rebuild kit.
What?
I think, does that hand me have one?
You buy the old toilet?
Maybe that's one that we have to have the plumber put in. Have to rebot it, rebot it or something?
I hope so.
Just a question, do we have a carpet cleaner over at the front? Do you maintain carpet professional cleaning, it's because it's done?
We do not have a carpet cleaner, no.
You'd think the maintenance guy could do some of that stuff, wouldn't you?
Okay. Replacing and adjusting toilet flush valves, boiling out urinals to clear blockages, rebuilding toilet tanks, adjusting toilet fill valves, flapper valves and tank water levels. Checked operation, set up bucket for old valves to soak, to soak in. Clear for rebuilding of spare parts. Uh, it was a urinal flush valve, four of them. Fifteen floodmaster toilet rebuild kits, bolts and four hours of labor. And then, uh, on another day, submersible pump not building pressure. Checked for airlock, cold pump, check screens. Found insulation on wires torn, sealed and wrapped wire, reinstall pump, pressured up and checked operation. Recommended having proper disconnect installed next to the pump. Not two hundred feet away in the old pump room, and that was one hour of labor for that. So five hours of labor, fifteen rebuild kits, four flush valves for urinals.
And that was at the plunge?
At the plunge, yeah.
I got one more question on page twelve. It doesn't show it on here, but it's actually under uniform allowance. We bought a flashlight for about a hundred and some dollars, does that come back to the city, I guess? If somebody quits, will we buy that kind of stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
Any equipment that the city purchases will come back as checked in equipment.
Okay. Must've been a good flashlight for a hundred bucks. Well, it was a hundred and twenty something, actually, a hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Any more questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. Are you ready to vote? Beep net, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Communications from the public. No comments. Uh, you can read the personnel thing. The golf course changed the course, uh, to eight dollars to eight fifty per person. Evans Plunge and the streets and parks. Ward mean replacement bids.
Bids were open on April seventeenth for three areas, bid is three separate alternates. Alternate Schedule A, or I should say three separate schedules, not alternates. Schedule A was, was fourth street area.
From one end to the other.
Schedule B was nineteenth street area. And Schedule C was the balance of Albany that wasn't done the last time that they did Albany a couple years ago. Just before I give you the picture. Uh, the low bidder on all three was Northern Plains LLC. Uh, we had two bidders total, Hills Material being the other bidder.
Isn't that Northern Plains out of...
Winner.
Winner, yeah. Must be hungry, I want a way to go.
Put a pencil to the paper, didn't he?
There was some spread on the first two and the last one was, was pretty close on the bids.
Dwight, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I think what we ought to do on this is make a motion to accept Schedule A and Schedule B and let's wait on Schedule C until we talk it over committee to see if we could possibly do this project in-house. It came in a little higher than I thought it would have.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
One second, yeah, but are we gonna farm out the street and curb work?
More than likely, the city will have.
But then, we, we don't have an idea of what that's gonna cost, do we?
No, not at this time.
So you wanna go with...
I don't see, I think we should table till the next council meeting to see, you know, talk it over committee and talk to Tracy and everybody else we need to, to see if we can do this in-house.
I have a motion and a second to accept Northern Plains LLC bids for Schedule A and Schedule B and table Schedule C so that the committee can go over it again and, uh, bring it up at the next council meeting. Motion to approve and motion on the table and a second. We need to do a roll call. All opposed, error, I'm sorry. Everyone for the move on the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under Old Business, Miss South Dakota Pageant.
You, you had some folks present last week talking about that and there was a request to consider sponsoring a scholarship on behalf of the city of Hot Springs as well as putting together something in recognition of, and I forget the gentleman's name, but the host of the Miss America Pageant is going to be in Hot Springs and...
Stan Masco is president of the Miss America Organization.
Well, I think what was discussed, uh, we give a break of about six thousand dollars on the use of the Mueller Center. The normal cost would be about eight thousand dollars and they get the use of the Mueller Center, the entire building, for about twenty-two hundred bucks. And, uh, I talked with the mayor about it. I don't know if you brought it to anybody else, but we have talked about a twenty-five hundred dollar scholarship for the Miss South Dakota Pageant. And I didn't entertain the motion to approve a scholarship and leave the, the Mueller Center as is at twenty-two hundred bucks.
I'll make a motion if we do that.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Twenty-five hundred dollar scholarship for the Miss South Dakota Pageant. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I wonder if we should maybe do more?
Well, I had, before we, before we get off the, the subject, I had thought that we should do a five thousand dollar, which I think is a, a gold.
Yes, it is, the gold level.
Gold level. And the twenty-five hundred is a silver.
Right, and most of the, if you don't mind me speaking, all right?
No, yeah.
Most of the colleges that we have involved, most of their scholarships are five thousand dollars.
What's it cost for the Mueller Center, for that?
It would normally cost eight thousand and they get it for twenty-two or twenty-three hundred, somewhere in that vicinity.
Well, it'd be over five thousand.
Is that on a regular basis, they get it for twenty-two every year?
Yes. So we're not, we're not going...
We already give them six thousand.
I can see the economic benefit to the city of Hot Springs to have this, when this thing's been here, the longest one in the country. I mean, there's something to say about that.
Is there, was there a reason why you only wanted to go that far, is there a financial problem there or...
No, uh, we just thought that with allowing them that almost six thousand dollar difference between the use of the Mueller, Mueller Center and the twenty-five hundred dollar, uh, scholarship, but we're already doing almost ten thousand dollars.
Let's be honest with ourselves, how badly we, we want to keep this thing?
Well, I think it was, it was my thought that we should do a, a five thousand dollar one. He convinced me that he only wanted to do twenty-five hundred.
So does that mean that's how you feel now, or...
That is how I feel.
I can't spend money, so I guess we can do whatever we want to.
That's right. So do we want to rescind that motion and move up to another one?
I, I'm only one vote here, but I, I could see, I could see us, you know, potentially losing this and this would be, you know, be hurtful to us.
You know, this, this brings in, I'm, I'm not exactly sure where it's at, but I know it's more than thirty thousand dollars to the economic enjoyment of the city.
When do you go have an answer for South to Stone? It was cut, it was pretty close, wasn't it?
Yeah, we're pretty close right now, uh, we're putting the, the budgets together for the pageant and also the scholarships. I have to have the scholarship information to Miss America thirty days prior, so we're coming up.
That's why we had to bring it up on the agenda this...
We'll make a motion to do the five thousand dollars.
No, I would second that if, if Georgia was willing to send her...
Is that the way we do that, Harley?
Just make a motion to go to five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go to five, there you go. I was gonna ask you, what is the best way to help you then, is that the way or not?
Well, actually, right now, um, money is the biggest obstacle that we, we face, as do so many other organizations. And every year, we try to increase the number of, of scholarship money because we have more and more building ladies attending and it's been a real struggle the last three or four years.
For the scholarship?
Yeah, with the scholarship. May I just speak just real quickly on something that you said? Uh, I don't want to take over your, your meeting, but, uh, every year I get hit by Sioux Falls, Rapid and now Deadwood.
They're courting you to take this...
Courting us, throwing money at us, throwing venues at us. You know, I don't want to lose the pageant out of Hot Springs under my, my watch, okay?
I don't want to lose you either.
You know, we don't, thank you, we don't want to do that, though. I think it means too much to this city, I've only been here, this is going on six years, but I know what it means. So I assure the, the committee that I do everything in my power that sideline that every time somebody comes to me.
I know for a fact they've been courting you because I've known for the last five years and that has been a very big push to move it out of Hot Springs and they would love to see it in Deadwood.
So if somebody seconded Georgia's?
I seconded the original and I will second it again. But it's not just a matter of how much we spend and how much we give, it's how much we actually receive in this kind of a situation.
Well, the whole town benefits.
Exactly. Exactly.
No doubt about that.
That's why I asked, what is the best way to help?
This scholarship would be the best. That way we can hit our numbers and then the rest goes to our budget.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we increase it to five thousand dollars and we keep the Mueller Center.
We already had Craig give that motion and I think Veris already seconded it.
I thought you just said to be setting it to the other way.
Just increase the scholarship to five thousand dollars.
Now, would that be annual, annual scholarship, or will I have to come in here next year and ask you again?
That's a question, definitely budget money.
Our budget will be...
Okay, I mean, I'm willing to do that every year.
Now, I'll be honest, with, with that statement being said, if, you know, as soon as this is done and is done with, it would really benefit all of us sitting at this table for you to come and talk to us right after. So when it comes to budget time, we have numbers firm in our heads that we have to consider and we're gonna make that.
I'd be more than happy to, what is the timeline? August, by September first, the first meeting in September, we have the appointment, so I can work on that. The middle of July through August, anytime you need.
It would greatly ease everybody's mind to know that this is all budgeted and we don't have to do something like this, you know, in the middle of the season. And then you know exactly where we stand as far as support.
Thank you so much. We're good.
Okay, thanks, thanks for coming in.
You have a motion in the second, you have a, you have a...
I have a motion and a second to increase the, uh, scholarship by, to five thousand dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you so much. I'd like to thank the, the Commission of Professionalists and the Board of Acceptance for this organization. We'll do our best to make sure that it stays where it belongs.
Thank you.
If you have any difficulty to make sure you...
Well, now that I know you all, I'll be more than happy to come in and talk. I kinda eased into the town, you know. Thank you all again.
Let us know when you come in, we'll roll out the red carpet.
Okay. And when we, and when we do present this scholarship to the young lady, we probably will make a big deal about it and perhaps some of you present it to her. Fair enough?
Fair enough, okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, Steve.
Good night.
Uh, we have the next item on the agenda, Under Old Business, the easement for Hot Springs, but, uh, Dr. Baltimore?
Brodean.
Brady is not here, so...
He, apparently he's out of town because he hasn't been answering the calls to, maybe guess, or to, or to me, so...
Well, he can get back to us then.
So we're gonna table this on this meeting?
Yeah.
Tell he's ready to bring it back, so I thought he was gonna be here tonight, so...
On the new business, plat for the formerly vacated lots, lots nine revised, ten, fourteen, fifteen and seventeen, block eight, Country Club Estates subdivision. I don't know, understand why we are doing this, they are, they are joining the city, but they're not part of the city.
I also say...
Why is that coming to us?
Because the planning and zoning feels every time there's something continuously, something joining our city property, we need to be involved with it, and I disagree with that, I don't, this to me looks like the accounting deal, but...
I, I think, uh, because of the adoption of the planning and zoning and, and all of the rules that go with it, I think that is part of what we, we adopted as part of the ordinance was to, considering the purpose for that is that somebody doesn't put something in that doesn't meet utility requirements and that sort of thing if the city ever proposed to, to annex or, you know...
You just don't accept it till it's up to, we don't worry about that long, do we?
On this plat to Custer County, what is that for? On the side, Chairman of Custer County?
I think we've got a red one, because that was correct, look on the new plat right here.
Chairman of Custer County.
Mine says Custer County.
Order of Commission.
To me, to me, that's the area.
County Commissioners of Custer County.
This one's, this one's okay, but ours are wrong.
The, the correct, we didn't make new copies for what went, went into the board package from the last time, but the original is the Fall River County Commission has signed off on it.
I'd like to have a legal, someone that actually knows about this, see if we even, should be doing this.
State law requires it.
How, how can the city have control of something outside of the city limits, how, how can you...
The state legislature gave you authority to, and actually to responsibility to...
Because of the Planning and Zoning Committee?
Well, well, because of, when you get ready to annex, if you ever did, then they want you to have some forethought about how the roads connect up and those sorts of things. State law requirement, um, we've had ongoing, um, discussions with the county about this. This one is actually, this was a vaca, this part of this subdivision was vacated. It was created and then it was vacated and we've been going on and off, on and off on whether the lots have to be adjacent or the subdivision has to be adjacent. So this one actually, I believe the lots are adjacent, so they, they butt right up to your border and so they need to be consistent, that's the only bound process.
All the lots joining up to our property?
The lots that they're plating.
Yes.
Does this have anything to do with the three mile?
Uh, no, um, it's a related issue. We, meeting the city of Hot Springs has not taken three mile jurisdiction. And, um, uh, three mile jurisdiction would be a significantly larger intrusion on those people's lives than what this is.
So do we...
They're close to us.
Can't you just enact a four line?
Yes, tractors and stuff up there, we can hear... Yes, tractors and stuff up there, we can get rid of them.
Well.
Do you need to make a motion that it conforms?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
La Sourd plat.
La Sourd plat is the Bella Teresa, combining all of the lots into one lot up there. There was a concern previously of access, and that has all been corrected with this plat. And Planning and Zoning also had a concern about the name being subdivision, and it's not a subdivision, so they corrected the plat there. It is vacating the part of grand road designation that shows up on the original plat. It provides a sixteen foot wide easement through the property. And thirty foot wide public access easement is also noted on the plat. It doesn't say here in the minutes of the planning and zoning exactly the location, but it's gonna pull the plat up, and we'll show it. Down for West River Street Public Access.
That's not that no main street up there, is it?
No.
No.
I'll make a motion.
West River's down along by the motel or?
Yeah, it's in front, because all of those property came and threw down to the river.
Down to the road.
And so, they needed an easement for the property, for that access through there, and wanted to out on to all the street.
I made a motion to approve it.
I just did.
You did? Seconded it.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to approve the La Sourd plat. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Temporary alcoholic beverage winner's circle for a wedding on June seventh and one on August ninth. I have a motion to.
I'll make that motion.
And I have a motion and a second to approve temporary alcoholic beverage license.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Parade permit, Miss South Dakota Parade, June twenty first. Is there a reason that we have to?
The mayor said we would have been illegal forever and ever and ever, and last year we decided that we were gonna be legal, so every parade in town has to have a permit. So, last year for.
That's right.
For the Fourth of July, and the Veterans Wall, when it was coming in, and all the parades since last year at this time, we've been having the proper paperwork filled out, sent to the DOT, and it requires copies of the minutes to go along with the.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to keep the city legal for a parade permit for Miss South Dakota Parade, June twenty first.
I got a question before we vote.
Okay.
Do we have enough people to do the parade? Because we only have like one or two reserves in Hot Springs anymore. Seems all the police department won't let us do anymore. So, do, who, we got volunteers, or what are we gonna do, do you know how to?
The permit says whoever is getting the permit on behalf of the city must provide the traffic control.
Oh, okay.
And it's key net wheel.
So, we're gonna have people that probably don't know anything about.
That's what I know.
I think Sheriff's Officer Davis.
The new sheriff's gonna take care of that, right?
No, no, I was thinking more along.
A while.
We have a motion and a second to approve this parade permit, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We'd look bad if the police were chasing the wall.
Yeah, wouldn't it?
Please take note that any parade in the future, you need advance notice, so we can get it onto the agenda and get it up to Custer, to Rich, Zocker for approval. So, anybody planning parades, click ahead.
Now, we have, did you, oh, everybody get a copy of the Deputy Finance Officer position?
Yes.
And you have an opportunity to go over it?
Yes.
I got a question for Mr. Hurley Lux, because I talked to him about this. Is it okay if I ask you a question, Mr. Lux?
The meeting, I don't have to really.
It's pertinent to the.
It is.
Okay.
When we talked about that, you said you really don't think you need this right away?
You know, I'm always looking at the dollar, and whether, you know, it's in the budget or not. Are we getting all the financial work done that we need to get done? No. And you're all aware of what those situations are that we should be doing. And, you know, do we redirect my time from administration? And I do less administration than doing that. Some of the comments or arguments coming to me was Debbie is looking four years, five years down the road.
Does it take four or five years to train somebody to do your job?
We, you know, do we, you know, what is my plans in the future? And I said, when I first took this out, it was five years, so, you know, we're already two and a half into that, and I don't see myself leaving right away. I'm having way too much fun with the guys.
You know, and we're having fun with you.
A lot of opportunities in Hot Springs out there, and, you know, and of course, the new mayor coming in has the right to change that for myself, you know. So, that's it. I've lived with that for all my life, you know, every year, you know, appointed every year by year by year. So, if you're doing your job and doing okay, and everybody still likes you, you're safe to keep going, so.
So, I guess, are you guys looking for an answer tonight on doing this, or?
They proposed recommendation from admin and promotion from the mayor that you create that position and.
Why would you do this two months before we get a new mayor?
Start advertising.
I don't feel that's fair to kind of tie your hands to somebody.
We're not saying that we're hiring somebody tomorrow morning. We're creating the position so that we have somebody in place, somebody that has knowledge of the city and the background of the city before Debbie retires.
She's not leaving for about four or five years.
Well, how do we know that she might not, she's got enough time in now to retire.
Are you thinking about leaving anytime soon, or?
No.
So, I guess my thing is, I really feel it's unfair to throw this on to like a new mayor within two months. They may have different ideas. I, I personally, I don't feel that the decision needs to be now or even the next couple of years.
It's a job description, and if our auditor did recommend that we would do something along this line.
Your auditor tells you to make up job descriptions?
No, she mentioned that we had some reasoning behind doing something like this.
Well, me personally, I feel, you know, maybe when we get another mayor, maybe this other mayor might take on a lot of these other responsibilities. That's just me, of course. I don't know, I'm not gonna try to pretend to even speak for anyone that's coming on, but.
I didn't read in any of their background that they have a lot of accounting and finance.
But possibly, if they could do more of the stuff Harley's doing, that would free up some of his time to do more of the accounting financing portion. That's just my take on things.
I get the thought of it that way. Basically, the way I'm looking at it, we're not saying that we're gonna hire somebody right now. We're just basically creating a position, and if so desired.
And establishing.
We don't have to hire anybody until a new mayor comes on board, and if he wants to hire one, the position is there.
Unless the mayor wants to, because he can hire anyone.
Right, he wants to.
Right.
And establishing a job description for that position. That's all we're doing, really.
I'm hearing a lot of he's going around here. I think we have a few.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm talking about, I'm talking about what I'm saying now. I wasn't, I'm talking about preparing my day on now. Thanks, Harley, remember that.
Don't be on the spot, I kind of felt comfortable.
Well, I told you that day I was gonna say that.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So, you're creating a position, so you'll be looking for something? It just seems strange. I've sat through a lot of these meetings, and I've never heard anything like it. You create a position, somebody who's not quitting for five years, you need insurance, she's not going anywhere.
We are creating the position for the possibility of filling it.
I'm just saying, you know, I've said it a lot of meetings, and I've never heard of anything like that. You're creating the position for somebody who's not leaving in five years. It just seems a little strange.
Is it full time?
Secondly, it will be full time.
Oh, it'd be a high dollar, actually. If you look at the, if you look at job description, it's not gonna be cheap.
The purpose behind doing it was to get qualifications and start training if we needed to start doing this.
I understand, but it's a, it would be a lot of money to spend to train somebody, rather than hiring somebody that's already got the skill, like you hired Harley with the skills.
Well, it's, it's not necessarily that they don't have, you know, what we wrote in here is that they would have the skills. It's not, it's very specific, and that's the reason why we did it.
So, not to train somebody, but.
We would train him, but it's not, I mean.
It's, it's not a, not a training thing. It's just creating a position availability with a job description.
Somebody with a bachelor's degree, keep in mind, that's not a minimum wage type position.
And also two years of experience.
I just think that having had a lot of accounting in my background, that in, in creating something like this, you don't bring somebody out in two weeks.
And there is a big difference between doing this for a municipality of, you know, our size as opposed to, sorry to cut you off, Carl.
That's all right.
But, you know, what you did was a certain, was a certain part of accounting, but we're also talking about a position where there's gonna be a lot more than just accounting. And there's, there's a few of us on here that believe that the necessity is coming for this position.
And then another is this finance. Is it, is it her job description?
A lot of it is, looks to me like.
A lot of it is, yes.
How many towns of our size has three finance officers in it? None. Tell me one.
No, I mean, what I'm saying is, we're creating a position, and some of us tend to agree that it's gonna be coming up.
For now, this would just be duplication of services you already have, and like I say.
Right, and I agree with you on that.
If we were filling the position.
Yeah, exactly, if we were to fill the position.
Well, we can always put this into place two years from now.
Yeah, we could.
But there's nothing wrong with putting it in place at this time. I have a motion to.
There's talk around the city, I'm not stupid, I know what's going on.
But at the same time, you know, there's other things that we're gonna be looking at in the future also, so. I mean, if the council doesn't want to do this, to create this position, we're not saying we're hiring anybody, but the option would be there for whoever the next mayor is or whoever the next finance person is.
Or the next mayor could just hire someone if they wanted to.
Yeah. But, you know, we've done that in the past, and without some of the council having the ability to say what we would like to require as a position, I think this is kind of a safety way of saying that we're not just gonna hire anybody that we want to set a requirement to who we're gonna hire.
Well, I guess, I don't remember getting to put any input in this, so I don't know how it was a council decision, this was.
Well, that's what this is. If you don't agree with it, it's essential, if there's something that would be changed on it, that's why.
I don't agree with any of it, so I guess, if you wanna vote, let's vote.
Chair of working has a motion to approve the Deputy Finance Officer position job description.
I don't have a second, I don't have a motion.
That's what I'm asking for.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Can we have a hand? Noes? Four noes. Five yeses, or four yeses. How do we do that now?
It would be spending money, looks to me like, so.
It's not spending money until you fill the position.
You're creating the position. And, you know, if you look at your rulebook, Carl, your position as president is not to do anything basically dramatic.
Should I doing something dramatic?
Well, this is something I probably should be tabled until the actual mayor can have a chance to weigh in on it.
I think he did weigh in on it when he asked the administration, motion.
As a president.
And you should create the job description.
As the president of council, he's acting mayor tonight, right?
Does his vote count then?
Yes.
So, it's not, it's not, you're not, you're supposed to vote as a mayor tonight, not councilman, right? Not right, wrong?
Wrong.
I think he still votes, I suppose.
He still votes, but a council person.
If it's tied, it doesn't, it doesn't pass when it's a tied vote, so.
Oh, okay.
So, it doesn't matter if, okay, it does not pass because the vote is tied.
Realistically, what I said is true, and you know it, Harley. About, you don't make any dramatic decisions, you're just, well, you normally table something like that.
Then at least everybody review this, and if you have something you wanna change or you don't agree with, then let's put it out there.
I'd like to see a wage scale up. Absolutely nothing under a wage scale.
Yeah, before it was, you know, put out there in the faculty, this is just basically the description of the job.
Maybe we should, wouldn't be a good idea to let the next mayor decide.
Exactly.
So, is that what we wanna do on the next item on the agenda? Class four position, job description.
Let's vote on it.
Same argument, we'll vote on it.
Yes, we could. And we ended up voting on another one, so let's just vote on it, give it over.
Do I have a motion to, to create the class four position, job description?
Being the street department, it's a class four operator's position, and the street department.
It's a position you already have. Well, actually, it's, you have a class three, but. I make a motion.
I'll second it.
So, you have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Dave was trying to discuss.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I, I, so, basically, I'm sorry. We're trying to create a step, and see what this is, right? And there's, you know, quite a few of the office girls haven't been considered for raises in a while, and I'm talking across the board. And instead of piecemealing all this, why don't we just make this step across the board? We're gonna be looking at, at giving another step just for this one particular item. Here's other folks who've been working for the city for many years that are at the top of their step and are being asked, as it is right now, to pick up new portions, become part of their job, and are not being compensated. Now, I will agree, we gave fifty-four cents last year, but that was across the board to everybody. So, I would rather, to be totally honest, table this until we review another, this step being added across the board for all the employees.
I have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I'm gonna have to reset my motion first?
No.
You act on the table motion first, and if it gets tabled, you're done. If the table fails, then you move on to the original motion.
All in favor of tabling this item?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
No.
Three opposed? Motion carried.
I think it was just three.
My thing is not, you know, what we're talking about right here today, tonight, on this, what's on this paper, I do not argue with, but this piecemeal thing about giving this section a raise and this section a raise, it creates not a good working environment. And I think we need to look across the board for every one of our employees. I think it's only fair to look at every one of them who has not had a raise, who has not been considered for a raise for a few years, to get the same exception that this particular item is getting, and the same item that I did two weeks ago.
Well, there was some, there was some confusion amongst, at the last council meeting, on the actual dollar amount that two, two employees basically received.
What I'm saying is, instead of piecemealing this and creating this infighting, is what we. we've done, and we all know it, we oughta do this across the board, and give every one of our employees an equal opportunity to have a raise.
And what you're saying is, this should come up here in budget time, to where everything is taken into consideration.
If we're gonna consider this right here, I think it's fairly fair that we consider all the employees, but yes, it would be best to be done during budget time. If we're gonna be thinking about giving any employee a raise, we should be looking at that at budget time, but we've created this situation ourselves, so, uh, my thing is, if we're gonna do it for this, it should be done across.
Well, we might not have an equipment operator by budget time, because I think they'll.
And we're willing to consider this right now, I'm just saying, let's consider all our employees.
Yes, I agree, but we don't have an operator.
But next time, I'm, no, I, I don't wanna lose an operator.
The two guys that got raises will just have to step up all day.
But what I'm saying is, if you guys wanna do this next, and I won't be here, I'm letting everybody know, I, I will, I will be gone for next meeting, but at least by next meeting, if you're gonna consider this, look at all the employees, not just a little bit here and a little bit there. It's a little more fair, at least it gives the, the employees, you understand, we're evaluating all, but not just a few.
Maybe Carl and George can do that.
Well, what, we did talk about some of that, um, for the CDLs to, for the street department, they do, right now, they don't get recognized for that, so we felt like that was something that they couldn't get for right now.
I agree with you.
You can't divide that out by department, if you're.
No, any, any CDL.
For CDLs, it's for all departments.
Because we are using that certification, yeah, and so, I mean, that is something we could do now, and actually make a difference. Don't you agree, Craig?
I agree, but not everybody's got CDL, so now you're just picking a few that does.
But we do use that license.
Yes, we do, but what I'm saying is, on this particular case, we've started piecemealing this together, and I don't think that's a proper way to do it, really.
And that's what we're gonna do with those, no offense, you guys, but like, our department, they don't have CDLs, stuff like that, so you're talking about handful of people that's got CDLs that's gonna get a raise again.
If, if we use their license.
Yeah, well, just saying.
And the type of certification.
And I don't know what kind of raise you're talking, but I know how much Hills Material offered our equipment operator, and he don't wanna go, but he, he can't afford to stay around it. What's he making, thirteen bucks an hour?
And I, and I was the one that brought that up when we, remember, when we discussed about hiring the police officer, and I said, you can't, you can't hire somebody, offer them such a patent so that they can't afford to have a wife and children and a place to live, I mean, that's ridiculous.
And don't get mad at me about this, but our water and sewer guys are making more than our cops are. But they have, they have to protect, they have to carry guns, somebody could shoot ten of their time, I don't really see.
It is.
Oh, I'm a good threat to finish on.
We need to consider them all. I mean, you know, I'm just using the ladies in the office, I mean, we're asking them to do more stuff, they haven't been considered for raises for quite a while, and, you know, I, I think, I think if you go and talk to individually all the employees, they'll tell you the same thing. They like to be considered for.
I hear what you're saying, too, and I agree totally, um, we did talk about the other benefits for them today, and that was, that, I don't know, will we say anything now, Larry?
Go ahead.
Uh, we're looking at, we have thirty-eight full-time employees, and we felt like we should give our employees no charge for the plunge and for the golf course, which is a benefit to them, and it's also a health benefit to encourage them to be healthier. Um, that's something we can use.
At no cost.
At no cost, mhm, so, it's not on our agenda to vote on it right now, but that's basically what we're gonna propose.
That's, that's a benefit, so that would be taxable.
It is, yes, mhm.
And that's another thing that you have to consider, too. If we have an operator that's been offered a job at Hills Material, what kind of benefit package does Hills offer?
A damn good one.
You know exactly what it is? Is it better than ours?
Oh, I think it is.
Do they have a retirement system like we've got?
Four-oh-one-ke, but they're not state.
I know you get a good operator, you need to try and keep them.
And I agree with that, I'm not trying to make this any harder.
And every one of these people, by the way, have a chance of working up to the last four.
Well, we've already, we've already voted to table this until the next meeting, so.
So, you know, till then, would you guys consider taking a good look at everybody across the board, maybe it was just a quick look.
We just gave everybody across the board a raise.
Well, what, you know, one of the things.
But then we turned around, gave the police department more money, you know, gave a couple water and sewer department, and not the rest of our sewer, you know, so, I don't know, I agree with you.
We really need to look at it closer budget time, and, and I think that's the time we look at it with everybody.
That's, that's why.
That's what we're gonna do.
My thought went to there, and possibly, uh, changing our step increases to go out further than, than just what they are, in changing the, the, uh, pay inequities in our system, what you're saying, so they don't max out as quick.
Right, right.
I understand your thoughts with your Evans plunge and your golf course, but it's pretty tough to eat a membership, it doesn't really fill your belly too well.
Nope, it doesn't pay the rent, and that's the thing, nowadays, it's not just what you get paid, but the benefits are behind the jobs you're being offered, and we all know that, 'cause we, we know what we pay for the city as far as insurance goes, we know there's a major cost to that, but at the same time, we gotta get our employees so they're set and they're fixed, and they're willing to make a career of living and working.
I understand. Did you have a question?
I'm, I'm just kinda thinking latterly here, but if you have, if you're gonna offer that as a free deal to your employees, you're gonna have employees that don't really care about the plunge or the golf course, or both of them.
That's an option, though.
It's an option, but then that's being treated unfairly, if this person has the option and takes it, and this person doesn't, you're, you're probably walking a pretty thin line between needing to write this person that didn't do it, a check.
Compensate them.
To compensate the same amount.
Who's gonna offer it, but they don't have to use it?
To me, that should open another door we don't even wanna open, I mean, it's just.
What door is it opening?
Well.
You're offering a, a fitness benefit to those employees who wanna use it, it's there.
But you got a taxpayer base that says, well, you know, you're giving more stuff away on my behalf that I'm really not asking you to do.
What are we giving away?
You're giving away a free membership.
That doesn't cost anything.
Yeah, Carl, it costs something, you be realistic, you were supposedly a businessman, that costs something.
And are you, you know, you have a lot of comments with regard to the Evans plunge.
I'm being realistic.
That the Evans plunge is in the black.
That has nothing to do with what I'm talking about, Carl.
Just the way we thought.
Well.
And this is for the employees, it's not for.
Excuse me, fellas, but bottom line is, we voted to table this, so let's move on, let's move on, please.
Let's move on to committee reports. Uh, Georgie, would you report on Edman from promotion, please?
We did talk about the class four operator, and, um, since that's tabled, all this, and we talked about that, but the CDLs included in that, that we should get a dollar per hour for a CDL license. Um, we did talk about the Evans plunge and the golf courses, the wellness benefit for thirty-eight full-time employees, and, uh, that was to include a half price for a family, and we did even suggest even council members, but that was something that can be talked about. Talked about annexation of the Red Ridge Estates, and we're investigating that, um, right now, we don't know enough information on that. And we talked about the personnel policy, um, Dawn and I and Carl have been going through an updated personnel policy, and, um, we'll have all the changes and corrections or things for everybody to look over and read probably by our next meeting. Um, we had questions on how to handle drugs, sick leave, and health benefits, um, anything else that, to, like, what we talked about the wellness benefits, and how it would be taxed or not, or whatever. Um, the VA contacted us and would like to use the golf course, and, um, just, um, with the VA representative, and do similar to the cost that they, you know, do have to plunge. And Pine Hills wanted to know if it was okay, they took carts with their, um, residents around, either use our carts or a cart, and rent the trail or trail fee, or not have a trail fee, but it was discussed. And, um, we also talked about fifty-fifty memberships with Custer, and other maybe, um, golf course areas in the community, in our region, Southern Hills or whatever, and it would be a promotional type, and the cultural, we probably talked to you a little bit more about that. Um, the budget, we talked a little bit about that for the Evans plunge, and, um, the different things that were spent during the opening, or the closing for the plunge, and the cost of some of those things. And Pine Hill gave us an update on all those terms and everything, and we're gonna do a cost-based analysis if, if, um, possible, and right now, we're not doing that, I guess, so.
We all can get a, excuse me, we all can get a copy of that personnel guide that we were reading for the meeting.
Yes, and all the changes and things of each one, I will.
Does that mean a full list of any changes made in any section, and you can go?
I gotta, you know, I'm not against veterans getting special benefits, but we're not giving all veterans special benefits. I, I don't understand how we can sit there and say a handful of people that come to our VA gets two-dollar swimming, when you got a hundred veterans in town that fought for their country in the same thing, so I, I don't understand why you guys are doing it. I, I, I mean, I'm a veteran, I don't care, it, 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 it's okay to me, but I just don't understand how they're doing it without offering every veteran in town the same deal.
These are veterans that are under treatment.
Well, yeah, I can start drinking, become an alcoholic, go to the VA and swim for two dollars, no. I, I'm just saying, it's, it's just not fair to all the veterans.
My only question was about taking them for a ride around the.
Oh, that's the Pine Ridge, Pine Hills wanted to use our, our cart as.
Just to take them for a ride?
Take them for a ride on a, on a cart, and would they pay a fee, um, trail fee, or?
Well, my, my real, the fee.
I think they should pay a fee.
I, I'm not bringing up anything about a fee or anything, I'm just asking, what would our liability be, that's what I would wonder, if they're willing to, to, to accept one-hundred percent liability, whether on our property, taking elderly, or possibly even somebody who's ill on our property, that if anything was to happen, and they're gonna assume all liability then.
Not only that, people playing golf, it kinda messes with, when a cart comes driving through, and you don't know if you should tee off, or.
And that was their concern, that's why they're asking us?
I would have nothing, no, I, I am not against it, I'm sure it'd be good for them, but there is a few concerns there that I'd want to have discussed.
I think that would really mess.
I would think it would mess with the golfers out there.
You can't just go up and, and ride a cart path all the way around the golf course, 'cause cart paths end.
Yeah, the only problem.
There's a public golf course.
And they do not just say on the cart, you can be sure, my father used to run along with.
Same as the free.
And that part, freedom is what deters my mind, is being liable to.
Well, they, they said they would only be with one of the, um, Pine Hills supervisors, and they would be driving, but they wanted to know if that was something that they could do, and so they are responsible. Well, the course, they're actually the city property, anybody could walk on it.
Right, exactly.
So, who, whose cart it belongs to was a question, and if they should rent from us, and/or rent the trail, but they have to.
I, I, I think if that was to go, you know, really become a serious conversation, that those questions need to come up, and possibly, they meet with Jason and the golf course committee, that way, that it's widely out there, that we're even talking about this, and we, we want to throw a two cents worth of it.
It was just something that was brought up to us.
Yeah, I, I know, but I'm saying, if it does, it's some serious talk, you're some concern.
And we, we suggested it all to be taken to the culture rep, so, that was.
You know, if there's not too many of them, maybe we'd consider letting them run a golf cart on the free, that's true.
No, I'm ordering. So, pass one more question.
We make the rules, Wes.
It's not my turn.
No, we don't, no, we don't, DOT, I believe, put money into that free and drill, so I think they make the rules.
They're supposed to be military drivers, and riding.
Some different scenario, I think.
They did it when the wall was here, they did it when the wall was here.
They took golf carts down?
Yeah, they were bringing them from down there to the Mueller Center for the quilted tiers.
As long as you got a responsible driver there, it'd be a nice ride.
I got a bad one, but your jeopardizing money with your, you're getting a grant, then you can create a position.
Anyway, the question I wanna ask, back to the veterans, I'm not gonna harp on veterans anymore, but, you know, there's people in Hot Springs that pay taxes, and it costs more for their kids to swim down there than those veterans have to, they may pay taxes.
We, we worked on a lot of that, and, um, one of the things Dawn and I worked on is the price for our local kids, and.